Okay. Okay. Hey folks. Good evening. Glad to see so many of you here. I appreciate that. I like it when people get involved. So I would like to open this meeting and please stand for the pledge and then the invocation by Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the Father.
Pastor Reeves, would you please give the invitation?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for another opportunity to come together, we discuss issues. And things that will affect our beautiful town here locally. We seek your wisdom and we seek your guidance. We pray, Lord, that you would simply instill within us the decisions that need to be made and give us your divine insight. This we ask this evening, as you continue to smile gracefully upon our beautiful town. We thank you in advance for your wisdom in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That was very nice. All right, Elise.
Mr. McMauler.
What I did is I provided the handout with the PowerPoint, but it looks like this. I brought the hard copy in. So if you have any questions over this book or this one, or anything in general, just stop me and ask me more.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah, it's not auditor proof. I don't know what I did. You just want me to have you advance it?
Yeah, let me just, sorry. We lost audio for three seconds.
Yeah, well, you'll find, I'll just go over this page. On the very first page, page two of the handouts. You can see we have our summary of our reports. There's five different reports embedded in the financial statements. Each one of them, pretty much two pages, or one is one page, but there's a lot of information. I hope you've read through it. If not, just go read through it and see what we have to say. It's auditor and auditor speak, which are the, in the reports, I'm going to give you a summary of it. So bullet points here. A very perfect report you're going to find in financial statements. And it's at the beginning, it's on page one and two of this book. And it's at the beginning because it's the most important report. This is where we're going to give you an opinion on the financial statements. And by that, I mean the numbers and the presentations and what the financial statement footnotes say about the town and their activity. We give it to you in this, in this report. Every entity that's audited in the United States gets a report that looks just like this, required by the AICPA. So any audit gets an audit report like this. And you can see the very top bullet point there is the result of the audit is an unmodified opinion on financial statements. So in our opinion, we're telling you that you can rely on financial statements. We have no expectations of that opinion. We're not going to say you can rely on the financial statements except for this item. We're not telling you can't rely on the financial statements. We're giving you clean opinions, we're involved. It's the highest level of assurance we can give you as auditors. You can see that second bullet point there. We're not telling you that you're in good financial shape or bad financial shape when you get a clean opinion. What we're telling you is the information that follows, one and two, is a fair representation of what actually took place during the year. We do have to report the third bullet point there. Anytime there's a change in accounting principles, we have to report that to you. And no one likes to talk or listen. I love to talk about it. No one likes to listen to discussions about accounting principles. But there was a change this year called fiduciary activities. If the town participates in a fiduciary activity, that gets recorded in two separate pages in the financials. And you do participate in a fiduciary activity. This had to do with impact fees you collect on behalf of the Orange County Public School system. You collect them for them, you know, and as you issue permits, you send that money to the district. So that's a change in the financial statement. If you want more information, you can go to note 15 of the financials and read about it. Next year, we're going to have a big one. I'm just going to prime announce all leases. It changes how all local governments report leases. So we're going to have, this is going to be some significant changes next year as well. So that, that's the reports on page one and two. Now, if you go to the back of the financials, starting on page 49, you're going to have several government type compliance reports. The first one on 4950 is internal control and compliance report. This is a set of standards of the federal government. They're federal government auditing standards. And I've been asked, why are we being audited under federal standards? And that's because the Florida Auditor General says you will. So we have to apply these standards to our audit of the town. And in this report, we're going to tell you any non-compliance that we find. This material, that's significant, non-compliance, small non-compliance, large non-compliance. Or internal control deficiencies that are a material weakness or a significant deficiency. And this is important so you know that, did the auditors find any weaknesses in our internal controls? Now, we don't do an internal control effectiveness study or anything like that. That's way more robust. What we're doing is while we're doing our work to achieve the objectives on page one and two. You know, can we issue an opinion on these financials? We know things that are deficiencies we reported to you in this report. But we do have two material weaknesses in internal control to report here. I'm going to go over those into the handout. There was one of those in the prior year, and there were no significant deficiencies this year where there was one in the prior. So there's two findings this year, two last year. That means there was one new one this year and one of last year fell off as management corrected. And I'll go over that when we go over the findings. But no non-compliance to report in this, in this government auditing standard report. On page 51, third bullet point here is going to be our compliance report with section 218415 of the Florida statutes. A very specific compliance requirement by the auditor general, and this has to do with your investment of public funds. We have to go look at how you're investing it and determine if it's in compliance with the Florida statutes. And they, we noted no nonsense orders. Page 5253 is our management letter. Again, a lot of governments in other states don't get a management letter. Auditor General of the state of Florida says you'll have one, and so you have one on page 52 and 53. In this report, we have two compliance findings and recommendations to report. Now, these are compliance, less than materially, big non-compliance issues. These are smaller non-compliance issues. And these are repeats from last year. We had no new findings in the management letter. So the items that are in the management letter are uncorrected findings from last year. And then the last report that you get is loose in the back of the financial statements. It doesn't have any pages on it. It's just separate. It's called a governance letter. This is required by the AICPA. Every entity audited in the United States gets one. And it's communication between me and the board for non-quantitative type items. You know, we talk a lot about secret inefficiencies. And, and whether the numbers are reliable or not, but this gives us an opportunity to tell you, are we having any disagreements with management? Are we having any problems getting the audit done? We talked a little bit about estimates in there. We talked a little bit about what an audit is and what it is. Please read through that governance letter. The three bullet points here are the most important disclosures, and they're one, we had no disagreements with management. We always have a great working relationship with management. And no difficulties encountered while performing our audit. And the third bullet point is disclosure of material audit adjustments. That's a requirement by this governance letter. So any adjustments that we make through the records that are significant, we disclose to you in there. So you can see some of the adjustments that we're making because a lot of people think an auditor and accountant are the same thing. It's not. An audit is a double check function, right? We really, in a perfect world, we go in and do an audit, not make one adjustment. We would say, wow, these books are fairly presented as we were given them. Any, you know, any accounting that we're doing, we have to track it. And if we do enough accounting that it's almost like we're auditing our own work, then we have to report a finding that's funny. Because if you go to each one of these reports, you'll see the word independent auditor in every one of them, right? We have to be independent, right? I can't audit my own work. My kids don't audit their own chores, that kind of a thing. They, so we have to be independent. If we make enough material audit adjustments, we get close to, you know, shading that line between auditor and audity, accountant and auditor kind of thing. So there are some general injuries in there. I know that's also no fun to look at, the general injuries. But if you want to look at them, they're in the back of that report. All right, that's the summary of our reports. Any questions on those reports? I can get some findings at the end. Okay, if we can advance one slide. I'm going to go over these briefly. I know you had the handouts. I'm going to go over them rather quickly. They're the same graphs that I go over every year. I just eliminated two of them that seem to be, they didn't seem to be necessary in the big picture. What this is, this is just a picture of the reporting entity. The town of Oakland is the circle. It's split into by governmental activities and business type activities. And you know, just in the name, you know what that means. Over here, business type, we have our enterprise fund, right? Water and sewer utility fund. Everything else on the governmental side, right? Charter schools over there, impact fees over there in the general. Just gives you an idea. It's a good roadmap to go to before you open up the financials because you're going to see these wording, this wording in there throughout. So on the next page, on page five, no one can see that on the screen, I know. What I did is I took a snip from page 12 of the audit document, just to give you an idea of why I don't go over the financial. I mean, you can see there's four columns. There are, you know, 25 or 30 rows on this. It's a ton of information on this. But the reason I wanted to put it on a slide, I want you to look at that third line from the bottom. I've highlighted it there. When someone asks you your level of reserves in your governmental activities, that's the number you're going to want to go. You don't want to go at the top. Look at that very top number on the page. Look at that cash number, $6.6 million. That's a, not a fair representation of your unrestricted reserves, you know, because a lot of that's restricted. So you go to that third line from the bottom and you have that number. There's $1.2 million. So if someone were to ask you, say, at a, at a, at a meeting of county commissioners, let's say, and they wanted to know what your reserves were, that would tell them at 9:30, 2021 for your governmental funds. Now, you see that section right above it. Right above that bottom highlighted number. If you ever want to know what's in those restricted accounts, there's a lot of them. They're all right there. They're in the bottom, like right in this area right here. So you can open up financials if you ever wanted to know where your restricted money was because you have a lot of it. And it kind of showed you where it's at. But I just kind of want to focus on financial health. That's what I do. I can go into in-depth about anything, but I just want to focus on financial health at first. So that's the number you look at, that 1.2 million. But you know, is that good or bad is the question at this point, right? I don't know. It's got a dollar sign in front of it, so I don't know if it's good or bad, right? But if you're, I would use Tampa as my example. They, their general fund goes through a million dollars every day. So if you, that was your reserves in Tampa, you wouldn't be in very good shape. You'd have a day of reserves and then you would be out. So we have to look at that number relative to the town itself. And what we do is we compare it to your expense. Day Ramsey type numbers. This is your emergency reserve. We take your annual expenses and divide it into your reserves. And we come up with the graph that's on the very next page. It's up on the screen. On page six of the handout. In the town of Oakland, it's the blue line. And that number we come up with is that far right number in the 2021 column, 16%. Right? So you have 16% of your annual expenses set aside in unrestricted reserves at the end of the year. That's two months, right? So if you were to receive not a dollar from anywhere in the general fund, you could run for two months at the same level of service. To give you an idea of the, how sufficient that is. There's a rule of thumb that this number should never be below 15, it's really 16%, it should never be below two months. The GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers Association, that set forth this number, setting this minimum. And you know, we've talked about this in the past because this is the best financial condition the town has been for some time. You know, you can tell that it's higher than it has been on any of the six years presented, but you can probably go back another five. And it's higher than that because something we as auditors have always been worried about, about the sufficiency of the reserves in the governmental funds. So I'm happy it's above the 3%. A lot of towns will have maybe a 25% target on this number. So you got to think, you know, in this inflationary environment, it's much higher than the CPIU number that's reported. You know, the, on, by the government, because I actually subscribe to the city-county cost index, and that's at about 13%. This is actual counties and cities and towns that are part of cooperative, and they put in what they're paying for goods and services and track. We track that because that's what the auditor generally uses as a gauge for city inflation. And that's at about 13%.
25% an attainable goal?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, absolutely. Now, it might not happen overnight, right? But yeah, it absolutely is. You know, you build it into your budget instead. You know, you say, well, I'm going to have revenues that are a little more than my expenditures each year until I get up to 25%. And you know, but that, that's just a rule of thumb, kind of a target is, you know, the, the minimum is like the floor. It's like the earth when you're flying an airplane, right? That's the minimum you can fly is that. You don't really want to fly to right at ground level. You needn't want to fly 25%, not 16%, yes.
So you're saying that the target for a lot of towns is 25%?
Yes.
How come the peer group is like 76.61%?
Well, that's the important thing. I was going to get to the peer groups. What I do is I compare the town of Oakland to like-sized municipalities in the state of Florida. I stratify all of the municipality by population, the setup of your fund structure, like we looked at earlier in your population. And then I, yeah, that's 14 peers that you have, and then we just average them. But there are some cities that have 200% and that skews this average top. It really does. So we're not saying that that's where you want to be. That's just where your peers are at. You know, and I do have a handout that actually has individual data on your peers. And every time I'm asked that, it's usually two or three because it's a simple average. Right? It's just, I add them all up and divide it by 14, and that's the average for your peers. It's really high. You know, there is a way you could get too high, right? If you get, if you had 100%, someone, you know, a citizen could say, hey, we're being overtaxed. You don't need 100%. The general fund's not there to make money and distribute to shareholders, that kind of thing, you know? It's there to run operations, plan for emergencies, and to have a reserve on hand for when those emergencies arise, in my opinion. That's what I think of. It's not like an enterprise fund. It's there to generate equity. But I, I would, I would take, you see these dotted lines that are in prior months because we've always had to do these caveats in these. You know, well, this grant money's coming in next year, and we had this CD, you know, that was in the general fund, secured by a debt in the enterprise fund. So we always had to do these reconciliations just to get it up to 6%. You can see on the far left. So a 16% is very positive number. I think you went up from four to 16%. And I think, and you'll see when I'm done structurally, structurally, I think the town is there. I think it's built and ready to go. So I think this is going to improve without a whole lot of any other type of work. It's just kind of like be patient, budgeted into the budget, and you'll be, you know, you'll be at a, at a higher fund dollars. I just am in an inflationary position, you know, if you're at 16% of your expenses and your expenses go up 10%. Even if you did nothing else, you'd be at 6% next year, right? Because 10% would be wasted away to inflation. So the, that's important to think about. The, we can advance this slide, one slide. As I showed you the financial statement for the governmental funds, I also just want to show it to you for the enterprise fund. We, we do the same thing. It's a statement of your assets at the top, liabilities in the middle, and what's left over, which is the difference between the two at the bottom called net position or your equity. But again, look at all those numbers and captions. There's a lot of moving pieces on here. And you can't talk about any one of those items without talking about other items. So what I do is the same thing. Look at the second line from the bottom. You can get your unrestricted reserves right there in one line. That says it all. That's every bit of your unrestricted assets less every liability you have payable from unrestricted. And that's the unrestricted balance in the enterprise funds. That's about $1,041,000. Again, is that good or bad? No one can even answer that, right? Unless we look at the level of activity in the enterprise fund. So we do that. And take a look at the enterprise fund. And we're going to look at revenue here. The enterprise fund for 2021 billed a little over $3 million in revenue. That's significant. I believe when I started auditing this town, it was billing maybe $300,000 a year in water revenue. So 2 million, significant change. But what we do is we take that $2 million as a proxy for the level of activity in the enterprise fund, divide it into that unrestricted reserve. And we get the number you can see here on page eight, 51%, six months. Right? We can just simplify that down to if your water and sewer customers stop paying you on 10 ones, you could run until March 31st at the same level of service. So just that idea, you know, under six months, that's a pretty strong number. And you can see you're right in line with your peers. These are going to oscillate around, of course, as you see, you've oscillated around in these six months. But your, your reserves are fairly steady here. And I'm going to show you in a minute. Your enterprise fund is, it's generating positive cash flow. It has a good operating profit, so it's poised to operate like you want it to, to be able to generate enough cash flow to pay its operations and to pay a dividend to the general fund to transfer. Nothing wrong with transfers to the general fund. In fact, if we didn't have this fund structure, you wouldn't have to make a transfer, right? Because the general fund would have a water department and have a sewer department. So just this fact that the, the standards require, we chop it up. Enterprise fund over here and general fund over here, the way you equalize that is a transfer. See, I, I always look at it like a, a normal household, right? There's one provider may work in the house, take care of the house, take care of the kids in the house, and do those kinds of things that don't generate money, but are still very important. And you get one that's outside of the house, works outside, gets paid a wage, cash flow. That's the enterprise fund. This is the general fund. And you know, when they come home, transfers made, right? Transfer from one to the other in the bank account.
Happens to me a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, steer clear. I could go on for a while, but yeah. Anyway, that's the way to look. And I have a lot of clients that are hesitant to make an enterprise fund transfer because they think that that's something wrong with them. It's not. It's standard municipal finance. Is the enterprise fund runs at a cash, positive cash flow, transfers the dividend to the general fund. So I, for the enterprise fund, six months of reserves. We can add one more. On this page, we're just taking a quick look at the operations of the enterprise fund. And see, just look at the 21 column. There's a lot of information on there. There's your operating revenue at the top, a little over $2 million. It's, it's close to flat from last year. You'd be surprised when we're doing an audit and you're in a growth situation like you are, we would expect revenue to go probably about as much as your number of customers went up, right? It didn't happen. Your customers went up about 10%. Water revenue was essentially flat. And, and the reason being is consumption is down. Consumption per resident was lower than the prior year. So while your customer went up 10%, consumption per resident went down about 7%. So the.
We actually want that.
Right, yeah, exactly. That's not.
Could be we had more rainfall and less irrigation and.
We sure.
Yeah.
The water fund is working.
Pretty wet here, so.
There was.
Right. That has a lot to do with it. The operating expenses, you can see they're up 9%. Like I said, there's going to be inflation built into everything you look at when it comes to expenses in this area. Now, you do know that in 2021, the town commission passed a, a, I believe it was a resolution stopping the CPI index on your, for 2021. It stopped it for one year. We haven't done any audit for 2022, but that shouldn't be back in effect. That, that gets increased by the CPIU. And it's important. I know people don't want to do it to their customers, but it's built into your expenses. They're going to be going up at that. You know, so you, to maintain the ratio between revenue and expense, I will show it to you on the next page. You, you, they have to stay in sync. If not, you can get a situation where your operating expenses, actually your revenue, and we're out of that situation where you can build repairs. We're using repairs again at that point. But if you see the graph at the bottom, it's your, it's your operating profit ratio. And you can see it's calculated here at the top, but it's at 16%. That means for every dollar of revenue that the enterprise fund builds, it has 16 cents of every one of those dollars left over to go to pay debt service, make a transfer, do capital expansion, that kind of thing. And the most important with that number is the trend at the bottom. You can kind of see your trend there. Look at your peers. Your peers are right around flat. This is an enterprise fund. This is supposed to be a positive number. You know, and, and the reason being is you do have a lot, you know, there's some peers out there that operated a pretty big loss. Just because of stuff like depreciation and things like that. But I just want you to look at the town numbers there. You can kind of see the improvement, right? It was, this was an number for a couple of years, and you know, the dotted line is taking out those startup costs with the sewer. You see the effect that the sewer department coming online had on those last two years, 2016 and 17, 20 negative 30%. Even after you took that out, it's still flat, you know? Changes were made in 2018, and you can see the profits kind of declined a little bit each year. And that's just going to be because spent, expenses are outrunning the revenue increases. But I want to show you on the next page. I break down those two components of that operating profit, right? Blue is operating revenue per resident, green is operating expense per revenue. So of course, the difference between those two lines is going to be a problem for resident. You see how that's narrowed in 2021? So that's really going to have a lot to do with, one, rate didn't increase, but of course, you know, when your expenses, it's in there. That green line's got a 9% increase in it. The blue line has no increase in it. So you see how they narrowed. So that's what we want to watch because if you go back into between 2017 and 2018, that's when it crossed over. At that point, you started having more revenue than you did expenses per resident. So just to give you an idea of the components of that operating profit. Last, before we go over the findings, on the next page, it's just the schedule of your cash flow. And this is what's most important in the enterprise fund, right? Is the blue line is your operating cash flows. That's all the money that you brought in from customers. That's the $2 million minus what you paid to run the enterprise fund. No accruals, no payables, no depreciation in this number, strictly cash flow, generated a positive $673,000. That little red bar is your debt service. Really relative to the amount of cash flow you have in debt in your enterprise fund is relatively low. It's about $117,000 a year. So that green line is what's left over after your debt service. $564,000 positive cash flow for the year. We just looked at your reserves in both funds. They're both a little over $1 million. The enterprise fund's pulling in $500,000 of operating cash flow in one year. So you know, that, that money can go for a lot of things. It can go for capital expansions. It can go for an enterprise fund transfer, that kind of thing. But this gives you a gauge that the enterprise fund appears to be running really well right now. We turn the next page. I'll go over the findings. It's broken up into two sections. Prior year findings are at the top. Current year findings are, are at the bottom. I want you to look at number 10-06. Right through there is the second. And this is the finding that's down in the books at 10, it's 2010. So it's been on there for over 10 years. And if you remember last year, there was one that had been on there for 12 years. They got cleared last year. So it would be bigger. This restricted cash monitoring has now been corrected. So good job. I'm on the town. Remember, about all those restricted monies you have, well, those have to be accounted. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of restricted money down the road. So unless those were being accounted for properly, we had this finding. That's been corrected. So good job. Finding 10-05 is still one where we are making too many large journal entries. And I do think this year, the town has hired a consultant, a financial reporting officer type consultant. I think they came online and, and she's really good at what she does. I worked with her at two other jobs. And just came online a little late in the process to get done by 30. So we, we were, we were both working in the process at the same time, not just the town, but the financial reporting consultant and us as auditors were working through this project. But as, as you were to look through this report here that has those audit adjustments, and you'll see we made too many audit adjustments this year that were big. So finding 10-05 remains. There's two findings. These were the, remember those findings that I said were. Uh, there's two findings. These were those, remember those findings that I said were compliance related, just not material, smaller noncompliance. Those are the two, twenty twenty dash oh one and oh two. Uh, oh one asking was capital asset inventory. Florida administrative frustrated code requires the town to inventory its capital assets. You know, it's your property, your plant, your equipment, um, every year. And that, so that needs to take place. That hasn't been done. And then budgetary control, um, the budget after the smoke cleared and all of those adjustments I talked about were made. Uh, the budget was over expended, not by a lot, but any over expenditure of the budget. If your budgeted amount is less than what you actually spent on a pool basis, um, that's a technically violation of our statute. So that that remains as well as twenty twenty dash oh two. And and the way there is really no way for the town this year to address that. Because really, to make an accurate budget amendment, your records need to be accurate, right? And you only have sixty days after the end of the year to make your budgeting. So that's November twenty ninth is the deadline. So you really have to have your books ready at or near the end of the year. Or at least as close as possible to make an accurate budget amendment. Then you make a budget amendment and then you're good, right? So this just happens when sometimes audit adjustments will push the expenditures over what if, you know, man thought they were at nine thirty. We finished the audit on June thirtieth of this year. So it was nine months from the end of the actual fiscal. But you see what I mean? We 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 found it's a expenditure in June. You know, when, uh, if you had a chance to address it, it would have been in November. The, um, and the current year recommendation has to do with bank reconciliations. Uh, this year, you know, I know a lot of the trouble with a lot of the accounting had to do with the accounting system. You know, if you have a bad system, it's not going to operate properly. It's going to be hard to run. And the town went to a new system this year and there's, I've seen them plan well. I've seen it planned by a lot of people. I've had entire towns step in on the planning and going, getting it ready to implement and software implementation just never. I don't think it's possible, but yeah, that's what happened. Um, there were some issues with the system setup and it being able to produce accurate bank reconciliation reports. So I know town's on top of it. They were in the middle of wrapping it up when we were doing our audits. But rather than just to be able to wait and let them go through the process and get it, get it right. We had to go ahead and finish the audit, get it done by the June thirtieth. So that's where the new finding comes from. So when you look at this, there were one new finding this year and one dropped off. So we had a net zero change in the number of findings. But again, if you go back ten years ago, there's, you know, fifteen findings. And you go back five years before that, and there were twenty five findings. So.
Well, under why?
Big improvement now now in the way that the town. I just want to let you know, I was I was here, you know, when I was here, at least, uh, a huge improvement. So, uh, that being said, I want to thank everyone, the town, uh, town commission. It's in our firm and the town, it's easy on us. Make everything available to this fund. And to get back to it as soon as we have any audit questions, there's a thousand of them. I'll stand if you have any questions for me.
Do we have any questions at the table?
I do have a comment. I appreciate it. There's been a couple of times I've reached out to you for some questions and you were right on the spot, getting back, and that means a lot.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I would love to see that, though, that list of fourteen peer cities.
Okay, all right. Let me give you this.
I'm sorry, Joseph, what were you asking?
Fourteen peer cities that he would go.
Here, cities, okay.
I'm going to give you this. It's my, it's a, it's a more in-depth financial overview that I do for my own self. Because as auditors, we're supposed to monitor your condition as well. We monitor it, and that's what I use. And if you wanted to copy that here, I'll I'll send that to.
Please. Yeah, I'd like to see.
I'll send it to everyone. Yeah, sorry about that.
Well, that's all right. Um, the only question that I have is, it seems like our audit collides into our budget planning. And is there any way to change the timing of how we do this, pull it up earlier?
Right? Yeah, um, I've been just talking to Renee about that before I came up here. They have, uh, there's a plan in place.
Okay.
To get the year closed quicker. And I'll I'll tell you the way we do our audits is just we kind of just work with people when we're ready. You know, think that we can never really plan ahead because you never know what's going to happen, especially in this day of turnover. Finance director may leave and then Putin did the audit. The the audit we did first one year, maybe the last in the next year. So as soon as the town is ready, and I mean, ready, when when you're ready for an audit, that means your, the books are done and you're subjecting them as for you. Not for us to do accounting, you know, for us to do the audit. So it is it is a really high level of preparedness, ready for God. As soon as you are, we're going to, we would like to jump on it because we don't like getting it done in June.
So we're going to work on us being, right?
Yes, for for two things. So we did do a budget amendment. We didn't cap for everything because there were some adjustments afterwards. And so we are already planning for the budget amendment for this year so that we can, you know, make sure things are adjusted. Um, we have up to sixty days past the end of the fiscal year. And I know Renee is working with our consultant that we have, um, as far as getting everything ready, uh, much earlier in the year. So that we can, again, make sure we do a good job with the budget amendment as well as as well as having everything ready to to get the audit started earlier. Because it it does, these numbers are integral to what we're doing when we start doing our budget planning also. So, um, it's gonna, it's gonna be behoove us to get this done earlier.
Okay. Um, I need a motion on the table to accept the audit and then we can take any comments from the audience that are there.
I'll make a motion accepting the audit of two thousand. Is this for September thirtieth, twenty twenty one?
I'll second it.
Thank you, everybody, for all the hard work you put into this because it's not easy. And, you know, we can just kind of spread the wealth out. That would be great. We have any comments or questions from the audience? If you do have a comment or a question, please come to the podium and tell us who you are. Okay, um, I'm going to bring it back to the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you very much.
And I do want to point out, it's two years running. I haven't said city.
Uh, yeah.
You know, Mike, you should, you should. Run that straight to the third one, Mike. Yeah, you should have waited.
Yeah, I wasn't listening. Thank you.
All right, um, we are to public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for people to speak about anything that is not already on the agenda. So if you wish to speak to us, we ask that you comment short and you come to the podium and tell us. Okay. Um, consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent consent agenda? Right?
I'll make a motion to accept consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any questions or any comments from the audience? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, second public hearing ordinance two thousand twenty two dash sixteen.
Ordinance, all right, public hearing ordinance twenty twenty two dash thirteen. Ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, changing the town's future land use plan map, a nation of its comprehensive plan from low density residential to commercial in the town of Oakland comprehensive plan. For certain real property owned by ideal builder by LLC being reached county property appraiser. Person number twenty seven dash zero 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 dot zero zero dot zero one two. Look at the following address to East Oakland Avenue. With approximate size of point six two acres. We need to provide for conflict severability and.
All right, who wants to talk about what this is about?
Hello? Uh, thank you, ma'am. Again, my name is Brad. This is Wade Trim and I'm a contract exam planner. And I'm doing a very short presentation overview. This is your second reading this evening for this this item. Um, as was what you have before you is the second reading to change the land use from the residential land use to commercial land use on the property at three oh two East Oakland Avenue. It's about about a little bit over point six acres. I mean, as you know, it's already developed as a single family home that is there. And what the intent is to convert that to a a real estate broker's office. Um, the area around there has a mix of commercial land use is already in place on your land use map as well as the institutional as well as residential. So it does fit in with that overall pattern. With that, I do want to just say, it's in your staff report, but I do want to say it publicly as well, just so it is on the record, that we did have a code enforcement issue with this property about two weeks ago, where they were doing work without a permit. It was resolved very quickly. I will say, we did, once we found out about it, there was an inspection done. It was verified. I did caught Ms. Lima, who is the representative. She then got with Ms. Givens, they're planning zoning and everything has been solved. And they understand they cannot do anything unless this gets approved. And then they go through all the proper permitting and reviews and approvals. So I do want the commission to know they did do what they needed to do to get that resolved quickly. We actually got it resolved within a day. It went very, very quickly. So I do want to just make sure that you are aware of that. Um, but in terms of that, other issues is, um, again, it's it's consistent with the overall development in the area. As you know, you were planning a zoning board, did review this, they did recommend approval of this request. And as we said at the last meeting, the staff, we also recommend approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hey, we went through this pretty thoroughly at our last meeting. Um, do we have any further questions at the table? Okay, um, I need a motion on the table and then I'll be able to open it up to the audience.
Make a motion approve ordinance two thousand twenty two dash sixteen.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, anyone who wishes to speak about this, um, agenda item, please come forward. Let us know your name and try and keep your comments brief. Reverend Reeves, we know who you are.
I just kind of want to say, who is that masked man?
At least it goes past two years. Thank you, ma'am, for this opportunity and and commission. Each and every one of you guys, hopefully you can hear me real well, as I can speaking through this mask. But I I think if I share this with you, it would be best with my position for this evening. Uh, I realize that there's three kinds of people in the world. There are those who make things happen. There are those who watch things happen. And there are those who ask what happened. I feel as though I've been all three. And with this particular project, I don't have enough information to, you know, firmly give you a rebuttal against it because I don't know exactly what is going to happen. I've been in the town of Oakland for years and years. You know, as I come off Star Street, I make a right turn. I go up to a whole new development, beautiful homes are starting at half million dollars, wonderful, that's growth. But one thing they have that I don't think I have is that they have the assurance that at least they know what would be built next to them. You know, it's not like, oh, I'm wondering, are they going to change your, there will be a purple home or or a smaller home. No, they know for sure that whatever is built with them will be consistent with what they currently have. That I don't have anymore. I don't know. I don't know exactly what's coming. I don't know exactly how it's going to impact my home value. And if we leave this to the kids, my children, I don't know. So I can, you know, debate something when you really don't know. Because I'm trying to project the future, how will this either possibly or negatively impact my residents? And this particular property butts up with our daycare and the church. And I'm I'm right next to it. So if I turn to the left, going out in the driveway, I can see traffic supply. I want anything that can walk to it. And pick up supplies. So now I feel as though that I'm getting into a position where maybe I have a chance to make some decisions that might impact my future, my children. Or am I being squeezed to a point where you're going to have to make a decision, like, what are you going to do? Traffic supply here, big lakeside church coming there, you know, which is okay. But now I have this commercial question. It couldn't something possible, but I don't know. The only thing I do know is that it's going to be, it won't be consistent with the current home situation. So I'm not here to rain on the animals parade as a, as a town mayor. Commissioners, you guys have been very gracious to us. That's a true. As 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 a daycare facility, there's things and that's progress. And so my only biggest concern is that I don't want to be that third person. There's three kinds of people in the world. And I just don't know how this is going to impact me. And will I one day, will my, will my grandchildren or children inherit this home and they go, Dad? What happened? Is it commercial now? Do we pay commercial taxes in order to recruit something? The only thing I know is that, as I said, as I turn right on Oakland Avenue, those residents have something that I thought I had. And that was at least knowing whatever came next to me or whatever would be built next to me, be a home. It would be compatible. I don't have to know. So right now, I don't know. I don't know exactly how is this going to impact me? Will it force me to become commercial? I enjoy where I live. I love where I live. I have an actual backyard. You know, the dog can run. We can do that. They don't have that up there. I have that. I have six back, you know, mature oak trees. I love it. But how is this going to affect me? You know, I I know that when this school was built, pass reeds were compliant, when you needed a return lane, we're just compliant, when you need to make easement for the water system, some property, we were complying. And we've just been giving and giving and giving. And that's all essentially saying is that. Do we have any input in the landscaping? Would it be a law or something to divide this for? I just want to be sure that whatever they do, if I want to sell my property, it's not going to have a negative impact. So remember, there's only three kinds of people. And those who made things happen, those who watch things happen. And right now, I feel like the one who's going, what happened?
Um, well, I think we can answer a lot of your questions here. And, um, I would turn it over to the Wade Trim gentleman, whose name I will learn one day. Right, right.
But I will say this before you move off, Joe. So we do recognize everything you have done to help us out as we've gone through it and it's been phenomenal. So it is always appreciated.
Yep, and I I love your approach of you want to just understand and we all work together. And, you know, we would never want to do anything that would impact your property negatively.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, yes, I think we have a lot that we can hopefully help with this concern. In my short time working with you all, I think one of the great tools that you have that will help his concerns is your design districts. That has, and this falls underneath that. So that will require the concern about compatibility of how the building will be, you know, with the neighbors and things like that. That's governed by your design districts and the type of building. It can be, it can't be a massive building. It's got to have the proper, you know, characteristics and architecture to fit in with the overall character of the town of Oakland. So it's not in other jurisdiction jurisdictions where it may be a blank slate. If somebody, you rezoned this property and you have no idea what that building is going to look like coming in next year. Here in the town of Oakland, you've got specific standards on how the buildings need to be, how the properties need to be developed. And I'm more than happy at any time with anybody to to talk with, sit down with, go through those with them. Absolutely. So, um, and the part is too, the site is relatively small. That is, won't be able to handle a significant operation of anything, be able to to fit on that property with the requirements would be for that to be developed out as a commercial use. So I I think you have those protections in and and absolutely, you know, working out with your planner. I am always, always open for a phone call, email, text to talk to anybody at any point in time with questions or concerns about what's happening in this one.
So we have, um, uh, jurisdiction over what the color of this building is going to be, the size of this building. Um, planting is always something that we're very, very cognizant of.
To protect the trees and and the buffering to the residential around it. Absolutely. There's so much protection in place.
I think that Reverend Reeves, if you look at, I made this point in the last meeting. If you look at the building on Cross Street and Tub, or no, Cross Street and Oakland Avenue, that's kind of what this is going to be. Um, it's going to be a very small residential looking, uh, office with a very small parking, very low impact. You couldn't even really, when we turn on, you know, Sal and I both live on Cross Street, so.
That was worried.
That was worried.
Pardon?
I was worried.
Yeah.
Ended up a small footprint and it actually looks very nice compared to how it used to look.
Right. It looks even better than it did. And it's very low impact to the surrounding residents. I live down the street. Sal lives down the street. Um, it really is, is not impactful at all. And that's what we're looking for with this. It's just going to be a small office with a few parking spaces and a sign that is compliant with our restrictions. So it's going to be, it's going to look like Oakland.
Will there be like some type of privacy hidden or wall or something that would?
Yeah, we, we can absolutely work with that and have that as part of the requirements that comes true because we want to be sensitive to the interface with adjacent residential.
Yes.
Where people live. We don't want to have that impact. So, so absolutely, that's something.
Do we have input?
Absolutely. I mean, as I said, and I will give you my heart, um, please, and then it's almost, you tell me, it was okay with this. Uh, you know, please reach out.
And Nancy lives.
Yes.
Nancy lives close to it also. So you, you have her come up, please. Come on up. Can't hear him on the recording if they don't.
Yeah, you can't hear me, can't record me. So it didn't happen.
That's your story. Keep going.
We wouldn't do that.
Um, so I obviously, I've met before, sixth generation from Oakland. Besides me, the Postels, the Harps and the Neds, we're the last and the original Oakland people. So I realize, I agree with Pastor Reeves, everything he says, you know, the what, the watch, see the progress. That's great. But you got to look at it. Where are you going to go? Where are you going, where are you going to move to? My house is paid for. So where am I going to go? And so now you're going to add, in, in, in addition to the mean hateful parents that come by every morning between seven forty and four, four o'clock that flip you the finger, throw trash in your yard, block your driveways and call you Karen. Because they won't let me in my driveway. Now you're going to add additional congestion to a small, very small area. Now, when I spoke with the individual a couple of weeks ago, the original person who was in the purchase of the corner of three oh two Oakland Avenue, they're planning an auditorium. Like, where are you going to put that on a point six acre lot? With an already, what, eighteen, nineteen hundred square foot house? So there's no room for that. There, and you know, unless they're planning the, to plow back that their backyard, there's really no room for parking. And when you do, you're going to congest Star, Star Street. You just, all of a sudden, there's just going to be. And already I'm getting woken up at five twenty-one in the morning with a garbage dump in my backyard from Tractor's Clock. There's just no consideration whatsoever to those of us that live with, obviously, the growth of Oakland. I get it, but there's, it's a, there's going to be some kind of consideration for.
Oh, we, we are definitely telling you that it's going to be an office. It's going to have a small amount of parking, a little bit of travel. It's not going to be, you know, a busy kind of business. But it is a balancing act that, um, we're trying to do, you know, because your property butts up to commercial development and you know, that's all that can go on Highway fifty.
I'm sharing. And I mean, I sold my mother's five acres to the town of Oakland so that there could be a charter school and a.
Got to consider it. And so we're, we're trying to be considerate of a compa, of, of, of a building that is going to be in a half residential house.
And I mean, and, you know, in all fairness, selling that five acres was, I was able to keep my mother in her home till she died in her own bed.
Right.
I didn't have to put her into nursing home.
Beloved Aunt Trina.
Aunt Trina, Aunt Trina, woo.
So, yeah, she was. But in a good way. So, yeah.
Yeah, she was, she was a good mom. She was Hitler growing up, but she was, she was sweet in her older age. So, but anyway, she would, she would be, I don't know what she would be right now, seeing what's going on, you know? I think she'd be mixed and she'd be happy that there is growth, you know? Growing up, I raised with five hundred and thirty-five people in town Oakland.
I know.
You know, if you weren't my uncle, cousin or grandparent.
Well, I was, you know, I was at the Presbyterian Church this weekend with a Ross who's very pleased with how things have gone here. So, you know, it just, it's, 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 it's hard.
Oh, sure it is. Absolutely. You know, so I, I give it, you know? I, I totally, I totally understand and I appreciate it from all areas. But you have to understand where the preacher and I come, we're getting squeezed out and we're at the age that, you know, where do you go? Do you go to the vet? They put me down?
Well, I wouldn't say that this particular, this particular piece of, um,
I believe she called you guys old back there.
I really don't think that this is going to be nearly as impactful as any, as other things could be. And
Can we do anything about the garbage being dumped at five o'clock in the morning?
That's a whole other.
I mean, that's just absurd. I mean, we finally, I think Mike finally took, was able to cut the construction down on Saturday and Sunday mornings at seven AM. I'm a nurse, you know, I can save your life or I can kill you. It depends on your number of hours.
Um, you've, you've got a good point for us to consider with the.
And I work for a plastic surgeon, so you don't have any problems.
I think that was a compliment.
We got you.
We got you. We understand and we'll work on the garbage thing.
We, we, it's just, it's just the, people need, we appreciate the growth, but people need to be considerate of those that are already there.
Right.
It's, it's basically the bottom line of, of the whole thing.
And we're trying to do that with this piece of, um, the agenda. We really are. It's going to be a small, you know, office with very little traffic.
Run, it could highly benefit me and Pastor Reeves.
Yeah, and we'll look at buffering.
So it's just, in the meantime, if we could keep the idiots at bay.
Let us know how that. So we'll be trying hard on that.
Figure out how to do that. Let us know.
Protocol?
Okay, we're done.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes.
Listening to you and hearing what they said, it sounds like you've really already decided. Is that correct?
Well, this is the second reading. Um, we went through this in the last meeting and to in my, in detail.
Okay.
So.
Have you already decided what is going there?
I can't speak for anybody but myself.
Has, so it has not been voted on?
No.
It's been voted on once. It gets voted on twice.
And that's tonight?
Yes.
I was just trying to help you guys.
I, I'm not looking you in the eye, but I appreciate what you're doing.
All right. Do we have anybody else? All right. And I will, you know, again, I'm not even going to go there.
Brad.
Yes, sir.
So you understand the neighbors?
Absolutely.
You understand what you need to do to make this place look?
Like part of the neighborhood, not being.
The neighborhood, small.
The commissioner and the mayor know, we've already had this discussion with the applicant and with the owners. Um, we have, they, they are not doing anything. Said they thought they were going to.
Tom, hang on, Tom, Tom.
Yes, ma'am.
Tom, folks, could you please, one conversation at a time and listen to what he has to say?
Thank you. Yes, we have already communicated that to the applicant and the owner to tell them how critical important it is to do things that's completely consistent and compliant with the town and its character and its protection of its residents. So absolutely. And, and they, they, they are aware of that. They are not going to, and I just to address the, the first issue of the event center, that's not happening. That is not at all on the table at all.
Okay.
As you said, Mayor, can, will not happen, cannot happen. And as anything that will happen will be fully consistent.
Is Mike Morrissey part of the makeover?
Yeah, what, and what, and actually, in way your code also requires this commercial development, it'll have to go in front of your appearance review board as well.
Yes.
So there's a lot of oversight.
ARB board.
Yes, your ARB, to making sure it does do as you said, sir.
So, um, just for those folks who are here for whatever issue you're here for. Um, we have an appearance review board that looks at these things. We have a planning and zoning board that looks at these things. We have a designer who approves what is going in here so that it that it looks and feels like the town of Oakland. And then it comes to us. So there's a lot of steps along the way and that we put in place to make sure that things are done and keep the fabric of our community the way it is. So uh, you know, just so you know, that it doesn't just come to us and we go, okay. It's, it's got a lot of approval hoops and a lot of things that are put in place to keep things looking in right for the town.
So from a property stand point, from neighbors or being a neighbor too, I worry what you worry, Joe, pastor and, and and your neighbor.
Nancy.
Nancy, I worry about that. So I know that having Mike Morrissey and all the team, all the, all the filters that we have, we're going to have something that we're all going to be proud of, that's going to bring up your property values in the end and privacy. So I want to be vigilant about it. You guys want to be vigilant about it. So just want to make sure that those are the steps and.
And please make sure that folks have your cards. So.
Absolutely, I will. And I will do as well.
And talk to individuals.
Starts when they submit the permits. I will absolutely reach out to them as the neighbors, let them know if they would like to get the plans, we can send them to them. Because it's all open. I want everybody to be transparent, to see what's happening.
So do we.
What we're reviewing and.
The site improvements.
Hundred percent.
Parking, everything. So it's going to be improved. Okay?
I just want to add, if anyone has any concern, if you go to the minutes of the last meeting, you will see how all of us run around the room and kind of went at, not went at, but talked to them, asked them so many different questions. Because we're all concerned that when we do something like this, we need to make sure, God even asked the question, what was the reason why someone wanted to vote against it? So we always want to know what the residents want. So we would never, um, 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 just shake them off. Because we were always asked, how does that impact those right around that area? But if you go to the notes, if you go to the website, you see the notes from last time. You'll see all the questions that were asked by the applicant. And the word auditorium, I remember this vividly. It was a, a language, how they said in Portuguese or whatever compared to America. So that's what the auditorium thing, that's what threw it out. What made it sound like it was an auditorium, but it really wasn't. So, but please look at the notes, you know? We would never, I mean, you know, Pastor Reeves, I know you guys very well. We would never do anything that's going to make anyone feel uncomfortable. Yeah, because I always asked, what, I, I always asked, we all asked, what does the residence right around that area say about that property?
And just, and then as an FYI, as Joseph was pointing out, um, the first reading is where we really tear it apart. Um, and then when the second reading comes back, any changes that need to be made and, um, further concerns are addressed, but we really, really dive deep in the first read. Yes. Any other questions? Any other comment? Hey, I'm going to close public hearing and bring it back to the table. Um, we have any further comments at the table? Okay, all in favor?
Uh, we're going to make a motion. Do we make a motion?
We had a motion. Didn't Rick? Put it on the table?
Okay, good. Sorry about that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second public hearing ordinance dash twenty-two dash seventeen. And well, please make sure that you reach out and get a business card so that you can continue to follow this project as we go along.
So this is second public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash seventeen and ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, admitting the town's official zoning map designation from R one A single family residential to C one commercial for certain real property owned by Ideal Builder Five LLC bearing property tax parcel identification number twenty-one dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero dash zero one two and making findings and providing for conflict severability and foreign effects with.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, now this is the second half of this same property, three oh two East Oakland Avenue. What this is now doing is assigning the proper zoning district to match the future land use. Um, land use you just approved for that property commercial. Everything we spoke about in the previous case applies to this case as well. Um, this now just finishes out the process to get it to the point where now things can move forward. But again, all the protections that we talked about, will they apply? Be happy to answer your questions, Jan.
Any question at the table? Or they need a motion, please?
I'll make the motion, except the second public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventeen.
All right, so moved and seconded. I'm going to open a public hearing. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I'm going to close, close the public hearing, bring it back to the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we're moving on to resolution twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two oh six.
All right, I'll take this one. So, uh, back on February twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight was enacted, imposing a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of new applications for special exception, use this, we donings, complan amendments and any other development applications or complaints, posing increased multifamily entitlements within this town. Um, so we've gone through the, the six months and that'll end on August twenty-second. Still a few more steps we'd like to go through, uh, before we leave the auditorium. I'm working with, uh, with Mike Morrissey and with, with Brad, um, now that he's on board, we are putting together, um, some information to bring back to talk about our design districts and how they apply to multifamily and mixed use developments on Highway fifteen. And then I want to have an additional, uh, discussion with both P and Z and the commission, uh, concerning are there any changes to? So hopefully during the next six months, we can get through those two parts of the process. Uh, we've already had meetings on March fifteenth with a, a joint planning meeting of the P and Z and ARB. On April nineteenth, we had a public workshop with planning and zoning. And on April twenty-sixth, we had a public meeting with the town commission. So we've got some information already that's been put together. Uh, we're going to go through and actually talk about some renderings and some putting the design districts into visually so that you can see how they would apply to these, these areas on fifty and then make some recommendations on, on things that might change in the code. So in order to work on those, we need to extend this pursuit. So the recommendation is to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero six, extending the multifamily to our current one hundred and eighty days. It can be shortened by resolution if we were to get done with this quicker. Um, we'll just have to see how the, the timeline works. These things take a little bit of time to get through that process. Do you have any questions? Also Stephanie's here, um, as far as the legal processes we've got.
Okay, so, um, to translate that for folks, um, what we are doing is extending the moratorium on multifamily, which is apartments in the town of Oakland until we feel like we have a good handle on what's coming at us and how we would do that.
Yes.
Respond to that. So, um, that's another good six months of, um, no more, you know, we're not taking any applications.
Yes, ma'am.
So any questions at the table? All right, I need a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash oh six to extend the moratorium for one hundred and eighty days.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Okay, bring it back to the table. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're moving on to Florida um, League of Cities Health Insurance Presentation and Coverage Agreement.
All right, I'll introduce, uh, Wendy Marson. Um, she's with, uh, Fort League of Cities and the Fort of Municipal. Alright, I'll introduce uh Wendy Larson. Um, she's with the Florida League of Cities and the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. We have gotten some information on our health insurance plan um with some major increases in our plan costs. Where we are looking at some different options and the option I'd like to recommend is moving to the Florida League of Cities. So uh Wendy, you'll go through her presentation.
Good evening, council. Uh, Mayor and council members, uh. Nice to be here and thank you for having me tonight. Uh, again, my name is Lindsay Larson. I'm with the Florida League of Cities. And I am the group health account executive on behalf of the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. So um, that being said, I want to uh commend your city manager and your HR director. Um, on going out, doing their due diligence, on trying to find what is going to be best for the city. Uh, I'm sorry. No, right, I don't want to deal with all of them.
You should feel honored. It took her the second one to guess.
I must have been sleeping on them. So again, um, we are just gonna go over kind of what the F M I T is a little bit. Uh, a little bit of background of it and then dive into the plans on what we think would be best for your uh town staff. Alright, so the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, it is a non-accessible pool risk uh arrangement. Meaning there aren't going to be any surprises. So when we come in with your premium, it is going to do that. There are no extra costs. We aren't throughout the year, we're not gonna be like, oh, well. You know, you had a larger claim, we need to charge you more money. We're not gonna do that. So you are fully insured. Uh, coming into the trust and you can run out claim. Meaning if the town ever decided, okay, we wanna go somewhere else. You are not gonna be stuck with an extra charge at the end to pay out the rest of those claims. So the trust is going to assume all risks and pay those claims out if for whatever reason the the town wanted to leave. Uh, by coming into the F M I T, you do have the pool of buying power. So currently you guys are kind of standalone, the town of Oakland. If a large claim hits your book, you're gonna see the price increase, which is kind of what happened. There were a few large claims that hit the book. Uh, you'll see when we go over the price comparison, uh kind of where that happens. Well, in the pool and in the trust, you're not just the town of Oakland, but you are all uh members combined. So our trust is consisted of ninety-five members across the state of Florida. With, I like to call them belly buttons because we call our members our municipalities. And then we have thirty-seven hundred belly buttons. For employees and then adding the dependence onto that, we have over seven thousand belly buttons in our trust. So now you're going from a town of a hundred employees to now a giant pool of, okay, if a large claim hits your book. We're gonna share that across the pool. The town isn't going to be stuck trying to uh pay that claim. We are a direct rider. So currently you guys go through a broker. We don't work with brokers. You will work directly with the Florida League of Cities and the F M I T. So what does that mean for you guys? There's no broker commission. You're not paying me extra money or a flat rate to come out here and and run our program. I am an employee of the Florida League of Cities, not the trust. So there is no extra cost. Again, your premium is just that. So there's no extra broker fee. No extra line items for us to do our work that we have to do here. So again, more savings to the town. Okay, so what does our program consist of? Uh, we do use the United Healthcare Administrative Services. So what does that mean? We use the United Healthcare Network. The reason we choose to work with United Healthcare, it is the largest network in the nation. So of another benefit coming to your staff is not only will they have all in-network benefits. But out-of-network benefits. So it's not just the state of Florida. So if you were in on vacation in Colorado and you got sick and needed to go to an urgent care, you can find. Network doctor there and you're doing a network benefit. You do not need a referral to see any PCP or a specialist. So if you needed to go in and see a cardiologist, you can go directly to the nurse. Yes, so there is no referral needed. Again, you have the pooled access to national network provider discounts. So this is huge for you guys. Cause again, town of Oakland is now being recognized as a as basically a thirty-five hundred person group. Instead of just the town of Oakland. So when it comes to discounting, when we go to hospitals or we go to providers. You're gonna get the best discount that United has. Uh, of course, it's gonna lessen the impact of claims. So again, when you hit a large claim, it's gonna be. Across the pool. It's not going to be just on the town of Oakland. So there is that sharing power of claims throughout the trust. And then of course, our bread and butter being the Florida League of Cities and the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust is the municipality in mind. Again, being the Florida League of Cities, we are your association. So we wanna do what's going to be best for your employees. There we go. Okay. So what really sets us apart? All of these uh services that I am going to go over are free to the the town. So if you become a member of the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust under our group health program. The city is going to have free access to an E A P program or an employee assistance program. So that is unlimited calls into our E A P program, along with three free in-person visits. Per issue per year. So again, that's at no extra cost to the city or their employees. We have a hometown health advantage program, which is a critical care management unit. Which this takes people that are like with diabetes, high blood pressure. If you went into a hospital um and had a heart attack or you were diagnosed with cancer. This critical care management unit is going to walk you through everything and set you up with all your doctor's appointments. Make sure you're getting all your medicines that you need and kind of get you on track, especially if it's a catastrophic event that. Obviously you weren't planning on having, right? It will walk you through that. Uh, the reason we put this in is because we saw such a great ROI on this program. And really bringing those people like your diabetics and people with high blood pressure. Making sure they are getting the care to either reverse the issue, meaning against bringing that premium down, right? Cause you're having less costs come in, less claims come in. So the reason we put that in is to just better your employees. Again, add no cost to the town. We have virtual doctor appointments. Uh, you you will see we are offering two different plans. On Plan Four, your P P O uh plan, the virtual doctor visits cost zero dollars. So there is no copay to use that, which again is fantastic, especially going through a pandemic. I don't know if we'll ever be out of the pandemic. But it's great. Um, so again, that's basically acute care, getting that done at zero dollars. Know your benefit trainees. So of course, if the town decides to move to F M I T, it would be a big move. You're going from Florida Blue or Blue Cross Blue Shield to United Healthcare. So we come in and we educate all your employees. We will do department-to-department meetings. We bring in United Healthcare reps that come and speak with myself. And then also our wellness team comes in and talks with your employees too. We do this at open enrollment time and then again, come in January, we really dive deep in the plan. To make sure that your employees are being smart consumers of the plan and aren't running to the ER because they have strep throat. Because right, the ER is gonna cost more on the back end, increasing that premium. Where if they could have done a virtual doctor visit for free, it's costing everyone less money. So um, we really take pride in that and we come out and the great thing is, is we are local view. Our office is twenty minutes uh east, so we can be here whenever the town needs. And then our, the thing we pride ourselves most in is the employee wellness program. This is a huge benefit to the town. It is free to the town and their employees. It is a robust turnkey program for wellness, employee wellness. Which we come in and rerun the entire program for you. We pay for all the incentives to get your employees on the right track. Kind of turning your culture around to be healthy, um catching those catastrophic events before they happen. We come on site and we do biometric screenings right here for your employees because. If this, I mean, I don't, this is shocking, but uh the number one group of or of uh people that don't go to doctor. Are municipal employees. So meaning those catastrophic events, those heart attacks, those strokes, they're not being caught. Until that happens. So that's why we like to come in, let's get them on the preventative medicine before that takes place. Again, this is just gonna help all around, um, bring the culture of the town better, make them more healthy. Bring down that premium, really tackle those large claims, like let's get them in-network first of all. And to in-network doctors. And then secondly, really turning around their uh medical usage of the plan. Again, we we fund all of that, we give incentives, we fund all of that, we do challenges real to here. So it is a very robust program that the town currently does not have. Alright, so let's get into the nitty-gritty, right? Uh, what, how much money am I saving? That's what we wanna hear, right? Alright, so your rates are set for the entire policy year. Again, if you said, hmm, come January, no, that's not working. We just need a forty-five day notice. So for whatever reason, if it didn't work out, that is all we need. There is no renals claim. Again, no commission is paid to me or to the trust. And then the premium dollars directly support F L C efforts to your municipality. So when you guys are up fighting up uh during legislative session, those are what is really helping. So these premium dollars go back to help your your league efforts. So if we refer to this uh big spreadsheet that I have right here, this is going to compare your current costs. And what your renewal cost came in with Blue Cross Blue Shield compared to our United Healthcare plan. So we took our Plan Four and compared it to your Plan Thirty-seven Sixty-nine. And our renewal rate came in at fourteen percent, where your renewal rate with your current came in at thirty-two point three three percent. So that is a savings with F M I T of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-four cents. Um, again, these rates are kind of based off of how the group is running. Um, and then of course demographics, and if we haven't all heard this enough, but inflation and medical rate. Built into that as well. The good thing about this is. Your rates went, aren't coming in as high and your staff are getting better benefits with Plan Four. Most of your staff are on uh this plan. There are sixty-two employees on this plan. Um, so I think they will be very happy to find out that uh some of their copays are going down. Uh, the the rate is going to be cheaper than what it would be if uh they stayed with their current. Their out-of-pocket is coming down. So benefits are definitely uh increased on this plan. With a lower cost of what renewal would come in. If we go to the next plan, Plan Zero Five Three Zero Two with Blue Cross Blue Shield compared to our Plan Six. Uh, we came, so your current renewal came in at thirty-seven point eight two percent. And the F M I T came in at nineteen point zero four percent. So again, a savings to the town of twenty-six thousand. Thirty-five dollars and eight cents. Again, this plan, your deductible is going to still be lower and your out-of-pocket max is going to be lower. So again, the benefit is still coming in better than what your current plan is. Um, and again, add a savings uh to the town if they were to stick with their renewal from their current broker. So with that, are there any questions?
Um, no, I defer to Joseph with any questions that he might have.
This is something we've been trying to do for a long time. It's just been hard for the town to switch.
Yeah, more power in numbers.
Yeah, yeah. Find the right time to make the switch.
Well, you know about this, we do.
So I tell Jenny when I see her tomorrow that we we're gonna switch. But it's 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 great. Plus they give back premiums to the to the local leagues. The more people are involved with it, money comes back to the local leagues too to do other programs. So it's a win-win all the way around.
Okay, that's a great thing. So yeah, if if you are enrolled in anything with the F M I T, a stipend does go back to your regional league. So that's a great as well.
So so just uh under full disclosure, we did get some additional um from our current broker, some additional stuff today. Um, that's slightly lower than this, but it also has the the plan design isn't as good as what the plan designs are here. Um, I see a lot of um. Positive that we uh are getting from moving to the League of Cities, both from how close they are. To the extra benefits that they have and being in a larger pool instead of being in a pool on our own. So even with slightly, the rates are slightly lower than what you're seeing here for the the uh what what they're offering with United. I I it's again, the plan design's got some differences to it that aren't as good as these plan ones.
You know, I think about um strength in numbers and I also think about no profit. You know, who we're using now, they're making a profit and do we really wanna plow that money back to our?
But I see a lot of utility being in a bigger pool um as we move forward um with the town. So.
Yeah, and.
This this covers and we're gonna go from three plans to two and these are the two plans that we're gonna move forward. All I need is is an approval um uh from the commission basically to uh. Allow me to sign the coverage agreement with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust.
And if Joseph, you know, is more the expert than any of us at the table elected officials, you know. I I do appreciate your input.
These health programs, hey boy, I mean, the actual health programs, I mean, that's. You you can't, you can't get that outside at these rates here. So this, you know, you know, and there were parts about people coming out and. And talking to the to the staff and getting them involved with these health programs. That's that's priceless. Yeah, so and and that's a big, that's a big piece.
We're already setting up meetings for next week uh with the department heads and the different departments to start getting this information out to the to the employees. So. Um, and I know they've already had some questions about doctors being in the network and stuff. And I think we've been able to answer most of those questions.
Yeah, I heard, I was, what you told me was that, you know, it was miniscule the amount of doctors.
Yeah, so far we haven't, I think there were only a couple that might have not been in the network, but um. We're we're definitely trying to be responsive to the to the uh employees and making sure. Um, so uh with that, I I and we've had, things have been good with the Florida League of Cities. Since we moved our retirement over to them also. Very responsive and Rodney's been great. So uh uh the the service has been good with with the League of Cities.
Yeah, the Florida League of Cities is the top League of Cities in the country. Of the forty-nine League of Cities, well, the four League of Cities is the top.
Good.
I mean, they they do a very good job. Yeah, so all that they're managing, you know, and they work with counties too. So they doesn't work with. Cities and towns and villages, they work with counties too. So they have several counties um that's part of their life.
Anybody else have any questions at the table?
Alright, no.
Alright, um, I'll take a motion. You want a motion, right?
Yeah, I just, I need the authority to uh to sign the covered agreement with the F M I T.
Okay, so I need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the town manager signing agreement with F L C M M I T um insurance. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, bring it back to the table. All in favor? Okay, thank you very much. I think this is a good thing for our employees. Okay, other policy matters, Bayview at John's Lake. I think uh there are a lot of people here who wanna hear about. I think uh there are a lot of people here who wanna hear about it.
Brad's gonna go first, and then the applicant also has a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm Brad.
Brad, hold on just a second with some people.
We pass. Sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, night.
Are you gonna get known?
Okey-dokey, and now your name is Brad.
I'm Brad. Brad, sorry, I'm serving as your contact at town planning. Um, as I said, what we have before you this evening is the preliminary subdivision plan for both Bayview and John's Lake subdivision. Uh, I have a short presentation. Um, also, as we go through this, if there's questions, given there's a history to the project before I came on board, I will ask Mr. Coon to help me as well, as well as Mr. Parker, with any questions you all may have, though, but. Oops. So the project, the location, I imagine y'all know, it's at the end of Remington Road, at the very south end there. And that's where the start is on, that's the. There we go. So as you all may be aware, your process, you have three steps in your process for development, uh subdivision development such as this. This is in the first step, as you see here. This is the very first step, it's preliminary subdivision plan. So as you can see, there's still quite a bit more work to go before they can actually start doing anything. Uh, after this, they'd have to come back to the town to present their civil construction plans, and then that would then come back to you all when they want to go through the final plat. So there is quite a bit more work to go after this process. Just to make. And this shows the location, the site, the highlighted in the orange there. Um, Bayview at John's Lake. The applicant is venue development. Um, that property is about seven acres, and it's a vacant piece of property. Um, and what the proposal is to develop twenty single-family lots on that piece of property. And um, this property has a zoning of R-one-A. What's a little bit different from what you would typically see here, this is not coming through as a planned unit development. This is coming through as just straight zoning on the property, because this project is compliant with the straight zoning without it. So what that does mean, and we'll get into that more here just in a moment, is your standards, your, your standard zoning requirements, design requirements apply to this property. There aren't where you're approving a development agreement that would give them, you know, specific standards that would only apply to them that may be different or alternative. Here, they, they will be subject to your standard requirements of your zoning and your design and your engineering secrets. So that is an important thing that's uh, um, stayed here this evening, so, um, with this project. Um, just real quickly, that is just a quick snapshot of what the plan. There, there's, it's twenty lots with an internal roadway. Um, and in the stormwater, the lots range from sixty-eight to eighty feet wide with those eighty-foot lots there along Lake on the south side of the project. Um, it does butt up to John's Landing there on the uh north and east side of the project. And Remington Road is, the drive is on the uh west side of the project. That's a quick little layout of the project. One of the important things that has happened over the last month or so is this development of memorandum of understanding. As part of the subdivision, there is infrastructure that'll have to be put in place and improvements to existing roads and things like that. Um, what has occurred is uh, Mr. Parker, your public director, your town manager, has negotiated a memorandum of understanding with the applicant to provide for their responsibilities at their cost, no cost to the town, or sort of certain improvements related to the subdivision and, and their potential impact. So I'll hit these very quickly. Um, they are gonna, they have to provide for twenty-four, for provide access into the project off of Remington. Um, they will also be dedicating a lift station tract, a lift station to the town. Um, they will have, with their connection to the town's water system, they'll put in the water system for project, and then they'll connect to two points to the town system to create the loop system that's very beneficial for utilities. They will be doing that. They're also required to do all construction related to connecting to the town's uh sewer system. They will make those as well as providing a lift station. Um, in terms of sidewalks, they will have internal to the project, five-foot sidewalks internal to the project, and external to the project, they will have six-foot sidewalks on the east side of Remington Road. Um, and then related to Remington Road, there's also, they will be doing a reconstruction of the eastern side of Remington Road from Gloriana, about a hundred and forty feet north, because there's a bit of a misalignment in that area to correct that misalignment. They will also be doing that as part of the requirements. Um, also, the, as part of the plat process, which is a standard requirement, they will have to provide the town a financial guarantee to ensure that all the infrastructure beyond even what's on this list that's put in, is put in as required and is maintained properly for at least three years. So that will also be part of the requirement. And also, an important part of this memorandum of understanding does also say that the developer will get no impact fee credits for any of this work. So they will still be paying all for every activities. And additionally, that is part of this MOU. Um, it's in your packet, the applicant has already signed the MOU. So one of the requests to the uh town commission this evening would be to authorize your town manager to sign the MOU on the town's behalf, if, if you so desire to do that. So that's it. So this project, it did go to your planning and zoning in July. There was quite a bit of conversation, discussion with their zoning board, um, but they did recommend approval of this preliminary subdivision plan. They did have two concerns. Um, one is the infrastructure improvements, and it's basically the items I just reviewed as part of the MOU. So what has occurred since that meeting, the memorandum of understanding has been developed and been assigned by the applicant, so that concern of the planning is on the board, um, has been addressed. And they also did create a concern about, you know, better development of the landscape plan as well as buffering to the, the neighboring development of, of John's Landing. So those are the concerns, but they did obtain approval to the town commission of this preliminary subdivision plan. So what happened after that? So after the planning and zoning board meeting, um, the applicant did submit the vice plans based on some comments that were received from the planning and zoning board. Um, we did receive the town on August fourth for those. And we did also send those out to Mike Morrissey, your design consultant, because he was part of the process earlier on in the process to make sure his concerns or comments were being addressed. Um, we did receive comments back from Mr. Morris, Morrissey, that he did not, his comments were not fully addressed. And he did raise some concerns and his concerns related to similar things that we have with the planning and zoning. It was uh with the landscape, the tree protection replacement, as well as the, the buffer with John's Landing. So those are some concern, the concerns that he raised. We did forward those concerns to the applicant um, to make them aware of that. And the applicant is now presenting for you this evening, which I believe will talk about some of those issues um back up very quick. Mr. Morrison was also concerned um that the architecture of the homes have not been approved yet. So he doesn't want uh the town committee to be what you'll see this evening are the actual architecture with the homes will be. Again, they are subject to your standard design requirements within your town because it's a straight zoning. And Mr. Morrison has not approved those designs yet for this project. Um, he also raised a few concerns about some conceptual plans that we've seen that I believe will be in the presentation of the um, the lot layouts for the homes and how those are laid out, and that may be adjusted. Those are some concerns that Mr. Morrison had. Uh, one of the things, just, I wanted to say to the town commission this evening is uh, from your staff perspective, um, those issues will be worked out as we go through those next steps, through the construction um, band review. Part of that, there's also more engineering that needs to occur. The engineering is only partly done at this point, because it is a preliminary plan, so it's not a problem that's, it still needs to be worked out further. So this will go through further review, and but as it goes through that further review, if issues occur that push it out of what you all are, can, have approved generally, and outside of your code requirements and your design standard requirements, it's gonna have to come back to you all with that. It has to be compliant with your code. If it's not, it has to come back to you all um to consider that change. So we do wanna make that clear to you all this evening, um, moving forward. We also just wanna say, you know, some information they will show you tonight, we don't want. Again, it's up to you all as the board to decide this or not, but we don't think you should accept that as you're approving the, the house images they may show you or the buffering issues, because we need to, those haven't been reviewed, those haven't been approved yet by your staff. We need to still work through that to make sure it's fully compliant, and we will do that to assure that, that occurs. Um, I did wanna make that some important points. But, but I do believe it will be able to meet our code work, that go through, through it. Um, so what, oops, I'm sorry. What I recommended is, um, is basically what I said again, is uh the site plan in the building and the buffering and all those pieces, what we're asking you as part of your condition, that you are recognizing that it still needs to go forward through the formal, you know, constructive design process. There's a problem, non-compliance, it will definitely come back to you all as the town commission. Um, we're also asking as part of this approval that, and, and the applicant is aware of this, these conditions, is that when they move forward with development of the lots, they will go through your standard design process, including the design review by Morrissey as well as your appearance review board. So that, that process will be in place for this project as it gets built out um, um, for the property. And the last point, again, just reiterating, I could just, I had some few times, I thought it was very important, is that, you know, we, as a staff, we can't authorize any variances or deviations or differences to what your code requires them to do. So anything that would trigger that will have to come back and, and get the proper review by most likely your planning and zoning board, as well as you all as the town commission. So that, so we do recommend approval with those understandings, those recommendations. Um, if you do approve this this evening, then the next step would be, we would then go out, you know, have the developer come back in with his instructions. Uh, we all, we are fully aware of the concerns of the John's um neighborhood adjacent here. And as I said earlier, I also have that commitment to this as well, is to work with them, together with the developer, to come up with a solution that not only meets your code, but most likely will go beyond what your code requires to, to get a win-win solution for both sides of the town. So we, we are aware of that, and that will be part of as it moves forward. So that is my short presentation. Um, any questions at this point, I'll do my best to answer them. If I can, let the town manager to help me.
Any questions at the table?
I got a question. I'm the, they got three lakefront lots here, and I'm looking at the uh, the pretty pictures here. And I see um houses on each side there. Can you tell me what the width of those lots are?
The three on the lot, um.
The two, the two on, that's next to it.
Under, I have my computer guys. I mean, I'll have the app being prepared for me. One is um just, they're both just under eighty feet. I think one is seventy-nine, or almost something like that. Probably, you see, you see?
He's asking about each side on.
Um, yeah, I'm talking about just outside the development.
Side of the development.
Yeah, outside. She's.
I don't believe I have that.
But she went to the left, and she went to the right.
For the existence.
Certain, wow.
This house? Yes, sir. And this house, do we have this picture to put up on the board?
Which one are you looking, what can that, uh? Uh, 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 uh.
All of that for, they're gonna make that presentation now. Let them go through their presentation, and we can ask some of the.
Listen.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. We'll wait for the presentation. My name is Andrew Ruth, I'm a castle cop, uh applicant and representing. This is, uh, there you go. So as we get that ready, I wanted to present a few more pretty pictures, but hey, and, and just somewhat redundant to uh what Brad just admitted. Since it's getting close to my time, I'm gonna go through it quickly. As I'm.
I'm with you, brother.
It's uh, Bayview at John's Lake, a boutique restage, twenty lots, uh seventeen interior, three hundred. So um, just some, some pretty pictures that you guys are, I'm still aware of. A lot from the aerial. Do the part of the lot. Our development team consisting of Steve Allen and Edward Barrero, uh civil engineers, um organizations design group, Matthew McPatten and Richard Creel-Montos, myself, and uh, Pina Lee is director of land titles at Ashton Woods. So um, some of the, a little bit more drill down points. Uh, we did petition uh Fish and Wildlife Service for technical guidance with regard to presence of skigs and skirt days. None to uh, uh, basically plan to do over toward this uh survey a little later on, because it only has ninety days shelf life. So that is uh basically going, done. The GeoTech report does just very specifically uh, uh, support the, the plant development solicitor conditions. We don't anticipate any of this there. As was stated before, we are going to bring in and connect to the sewer main um, and both water and sewer will be uh, will be uh brought into the subdivision that I expressed for detailed care terms of. Um, but there are the lots and the configuration of the lots, sizes of the lots. Um, all of which you see there are, love, let it go. The, this is a very preliminary footprint of the, of product that Ashton Woods uh plans to use. It's the same product, their backloaded garage, just as you can see, it's kind of small, but um, you can't see them in your, in your handouts. Um, but again, we, we do introduce Ashton Woods as the, as the builder of this subdivision. Uh, and your tablets as well as, as, as some more details of the product that's being planned. And the, and, and the good thing here is that they were very adamant about using this product and making sure it fits, because it is the Ashton Woods product that is currently being reviewed by Mr. Morrison uh at, for their Riley Farm project. So the, the very product that's going in here is going, is being reviewed from the design standards standpoint, um, currently by, by Morrissey. So it's kind of a, a, a real win-win in terms of product and product use. The landscape cross-section, we wanted to give you a sense of what landscape is gonna look like in, 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 in this uh subdivision. You could see some of the specifics in terms of the types and species that we're planning. Uh, and this is just a cross-section as you come into the community and make that first right into that length of homes. Compared to. Quick, you know, just give me a sense of, of what the landscape, like some, some of these trees, I'm not sure the tree purity, et cetera, it's act, but, but should be pretty, pretty close. The folks that developed this video, it's so uh from the landscape plan. And that is entering the community, uh, and then making a right into stretch of all. In all products that is uh currently under review for, from the design standard stand.
Looks like a lot of cracks and asphalt.
Very realistic, right? But I, I, I thought I would do a little bit with you so that you can see some of the, this is the MOU that um Brad already went through. I, I just need to reiterate, the section, this might be helpful in terms of a little bit more detail on, on the straightening that uh Remington Road all the way to Gloriana. Doing as, as agreed. Um, a concern was brought forth uh to stakeholders uh by the John, John's Landing actually represented after the recent EC hearing held on tonight, July nineteenth, uh primarily regarding, from what we understood, a privacy issue at the northern border of Bayview properties and butts down and way the entrance to their community. We were informed immediately. We were informed immediately that that felt it did not speak at the hearings, didn't know about it until I got the call from Steve. But once we did, I had an exchange with them for conversation. And we we basically had. An understanding of what primarily we needed to to address and and. Through that, we we did discover a early comment from Mike Morrison. That occurred in in pre-application that our team had missed. So based on the conversation with the member from the HOA and. That discovery, we did change landscape plan. And I'll show you some details on on that plan as regard to that. This is the actual. Comment from from Morrison. With regard to the northern border on on the top side there. So a little bit more detail on on the entrance point. And a an aerial as to the area that we're we're going to be dealing with. And basically the cross section of northern boundary, southern parts of Butts Gons Landing. We're we're doing a pretty robust. Planting there of hybernium and and smokes, et cetera. And this will show you, you know, the the species and planting plants, the landscape plan. Little bit more rundown information in terms of the caliper and the size of trees, et cetera, if you're. You'd like to take a closer look, but.
Um, hang on a second. Do we have one conversation in the room at a time, please? Okay. Thank you.
The the visual here is something we had our landscape architects prepare so that you can see. The buffer that's planned. And this is a visual from John's Landing way back. To to the property. This is a rendering of larger sections of of that. I've got this picture in my community of a of a pretty mature hybrid bush. It's been there a while. Amount of. You know, private creates. So pretty effective, I would think. This just shows distances from from. The entry point to John's Landing in terms of. Of the amount of space there is between the boundary of our northern side. Of the of the parcel and the road as well as the back ends of those properties. On the entrance. We did get the letter from John's Landing HOA on Tuesday, August second. Requesting boundary wall fence between communities, which, you know, basically was a. Something late developing, so we we bring it forth for discussion. Of the boundary wall that accompanied the letter. I just superimpose the site plan as it as relates to the three parcels to to the. So we can get kind of a a sense of of how that. Lots eighty four, ninety, ninety one is compared to this HOA letter are really the the key. Homes that need to deal with. Home orientation, I I wanted to note exposed as well as side of the homes in Bayview. So we are, we are very open to finding a solution to to this. This issue, privacy, and just wanted to offer up some. Lots ninety, ninety one, again, most of the side of the homes that are exposed. Considering a large majority of the lots, eighty four, ninety, ninety one, that will face the rear of the Bayview properties are either. The silent homes or backyard areas outside. May that may be there. The practical use and real utility of the of these back. Is less likely to create privacy issues with the fact that they be lost. And there's also a lot of large public debt. And then I think the aesthetic consideration are are something that. You know, talked about, whatever the solution we we end up coming up with. I I think it should come that they're 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 existing. Of whether of fence and and it's it's a really nice monument with with wrought iron connections. So. We in doing the. The northern border solution on landscape, it just struck us that it would be an ideal solution to carry. Through the eastern side rather than create a masonry or whatever wall behind the wall. But again. We we vote on that step and in exchange of ideas, we're open to to solving it. In an equitable way.
Yeah, questions from the table. And if you have an answer to the lot sizes of the budding homes. Otherwise, we'll pay that front.
I do have that man.
Okay.
I did, I just looked that up. I can provide that very quickly.
I mean, if you go to the slide where the lot legend is. Brad, if you have it.
Yes, sir. Yes, I am. So the the house in the a whole notch there at the bottom left. According to this. That property is approximately one point five acres in size, that lot there. And then the other two lots that are on Largo Vista, seven fifteen and seven sixteen. Seven fifteen is approximately a half acre in size. And seven sixteen Largo Vista is approximately point six acres in size. Those three that are but in those areas, those are those lots.
Okay, and. I can't see you, but the lady that was.
Yeah, I I I think what the information he just gave you was not what he asked. Like in the lakefront was, and our lakefront on lot ninety one is a hundred and thirty eight lengthwise. Theirs are all going to be. So from, so it's nowhere near what most of the lake shore are in John's.
Yeah, they're.
They're stacked on top of each other. So.
Okay.
What what is the average? What would you say the average with this? And and which one are you to the right or by the?
Here, seven sixteen for the, every single picture where the housing.
Which one? I'm sorry.
Lot ninety one. Lot ninety one.
The very first one.
The lakefront lot.
This one right here? Okay.
There's ninety one there.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Lots, lakefront lots are basically eighty by two hundred and anywhere from two twenty to two fifty depth. So they're point four, one point four two and point four eight acre.
Can you go to this picture? So lot number ninety one, what is the? Not the depth, but the width, one thirty eight? That's your home?
One, yeah, tell me what take what which one you're.
That one. It's that one.
All right, I'm gonna look at you. This is my house right here.
What's the width on the back to the lake?
A hundred and thirty.
Eight.
One thirty eight.
Okay.
Lakefront.
Lakefront. So the rest of the homes, lakefront, going east. John's Landing, what is the average lakefront?
Well, we studied that in in evaluating comparable pricing. I don't have that information, but there was one lot in in on the lakefront that's vacant. That was very comparable in size. I I don't have the specific information.
And I can get the flat for you. I don't have that with me, so not me. But that's something that needs to be considered, maybe. Nothing compared to one thirty eight.
Mayor, what's the depth of these lot, three lots? What's the depth? They're eighty feet.
Two hundred and twenty to two fifty.
The houses are longer. Sorry about the lake and the docks and whether you're going to have three docks all on top of each other at only eighty feet and width.
And did we determine what the other ones to the east of your house were on an average? Hundred, she said about them.
Yeah, they're all, they all should be over. Maybe starting at one, there's only one that's.
There is, there is one I recall.
The other one, that house on the other side, it looks like it could even be wider.
One next to me is even bigger than ours. The one that sold the property. But he owned all of that.
The builder.
Right, the the west side.
And he owned the property.
Yeah, he owned all of the property, the John lady.
Yes, he's he and his brother. And they build houses in Oakland Park. J and J, I think it's J and J.
Yes, that's. So did you want to have the community speak?
Yes, I will. But once we're done here. Rick, do you have all the information you need?
Yep.
Sal?
I have a few more questions.
Okay.
So. This slide, I showed the wall for both boundary walls, both are walls.
That was accompanied the HOA a letter stating that, you know, they were they were in support of the. But this wanted to have some dialogue in terms of that privacy. So what they, I think they stated in the letter you guys have, that preferably. Based on all.
Okay.
I'd, I mean, if they're asking for a masonry wall, isn't a brick wall preferable to a masonry?
I would think aesthetically.
Aesthetic.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, and our masonry.
Well, the brick walls already exist.
And that we're not. One second, let me ask a question. The brick wall. Is this brick wall more to south already existing?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
All right, and. Guys, okay. One conversation at a time.
Well, let me say this, it is our understanding that it does exist. From what I was on on property, it does, it does appear to. To what degree exists in terms of how long it is, et cetera, I don't know, but it seems that it even comes down.
But I have another question. Are we even talking about brick walls at this point? No, so let's let's keep the conversation to what we're approving tonight.
All right, so so the the idea is the Johns Landing has asked for walls to be constructed. As a as a buffer between, on the north side, there is already existing the wrought iron fence with the brick monuments. And so what they're suggesting is is buffering that with landscape rather than building a wall. On the Bayview side.
But are we, are we even discussing that tonight?
Well, it's it's one of the considerations that Johns Landing wanted to make sure was discussed as as part of, at least as part of this moving forward.
Right, and and further, I wanted to bring it forth and perhaps I did do need to, but. But I wanted to to kind of be of full disclosure in that regard so that we we don't necessarily. You know, that that we're we're armed with as much information as possible. To 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 discuss it and see how we can solve it.
Okay.
Honestly, it probably isn't part of this agenda, but probably would quickly become a part of it with community involved. So anticipating that community involvement, we wanted to, you know, kind of talk about it and 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 see how we could solve. You know, aesthetically, and and if it were my decision, I wouldn't want to have what's existing, but then have another masonry. Whatever that may be behind the wall, but we could certainly put forward.
Okay, so. I'm sorry, but at this point. You're willing to discuss a wall.
Absolutely.
What that wall looks like.
Well, we're we're willing to discuss a privacy.
Okay, so a privacy buffer of some. But when is the appropriate time to discuss what I'm asking?
What what needs to happen is.
I don't want to muddy the water here.
I I understand. What needs to happen is, and and Brad can correct me if I'm wrong here, but basically. What staff's gonna do, you know, what you're doing is is approving this preliminary subdivision plan with twenty lots based off of the the diameter that they've showed you. The next step in the process would be they're going to come back with construction plans. And with those construction plans, they're going to give us a landscape, a full blown landscape plan. They've already kind of given you an idea of what they're looking to do. We're going to take that landscape plan and we're going to take our code and we're going to compare it to that landscape plan to make sure that they meet the code. Because again, this is straight zoning. What we need as staff is if if the intent is to also have additional above that code. We need to make sure that we are looking for that also, which would include this vibranum buffer.
Okay.
If on that east side, you wanted to have the same kind of wrought iron fence. And and the same kind of vibranum buffer down that east side, then we need to make sure that we're looking for that in those construction plans. So that when they get approved, so that and that's the missing piece is that east side, if you if you're in agreement that landscape buffer. Is is right on the north side. That that can move forward fairly easy. The east side, I don't believe there's anything in between the two subdivisions. There's there's nothing, there's no barrier between your house and this vacant property right now. And it's the same. It's the same wrought iron. Okay, so so down, so down that east side.
All right.
Thank you. So we just need to know that we're looking for that additional buffer if that's the direction we need to move in. So that's where the. This part of it is, but in general, what you're looking to do is approve this site plan with twenty lots. That's that's what's on the table tonight. So the the landscape, the buffer, all will come back.
So all we really need to say for at this point, if we agree there's going to be a buffer, we will get to the details of that buffer later.
Okay, and how are you you gonna let residents give their input? Because clearly they want to.
Of course I do, and and that's really the reason we wanted to give ours. And then and then be prepared to listen to what might be suggested otherwise.
Yeah, and that could take quite some time.
I don't believe it should. I I mean, I wouldn't think. I mean, it's it's rather easy. It's either a landscape buffer or it's some sort of or.
It's not that easy. You should know that.
But I don't need to simplify, but it just seems like it's, you know, A or B.
All right, well, we still, we got to get to that point. Let's just kind of do.
And just.
Nice problem.
Point of clarification, because we were having a discussion on the lakefront lots. They vary all the way across here. We've got the property appraiser pulled up and they've got lot widths on here, anywhere from one forty two. Eighty five, seventy nine. I can't read. Ninety nine.
That's the largest one, one seventy.
One seventy. So the the lots do vary as the terrain goes across there. So what they have on the wall, and I forgot to ask earlier.
For a minute. Okay.
So ju- just just to put that out there, they they go anywhere from from eighty five to one seventy, so.
This should all be worked out at the staff level.
Yes.
This should not be coming to us, I guess. It really should not.
There was some, there was some gaps in in that in that process that that we're trying to shore up, you know. As best as we can.
Well, I'll tell you the simple problem for me right now that I wouldn't be ready to do anything on. Does that lakefront?
I'm not ready to, I'm not ready.
Does that lake?
There's many.
Two or three, and until we can get to that, then.
Trying to look over because I'm lost, so I'm just looking at my phone stuff.
Uh I, but this is me personally, I'm not. Either way, I'm I'm not comfortable at this point.
Me either.
With the discrepancy between black box, whether that should be three or whether you need somehow to cut that down to two.
I think this is something that.
Something that you guys should work on before we.
I think and I think that once you've worked on it, I think that that's something that we should be discussing in our one-on-ones, so that when we come to the table, we know what's what where the gaps are, we know what we need to do, and this is just two-way this far.
I say just a question from our our point. Um we are applying from from a, you know, code sense and sign, I mean, and standards yet to be to be determined. But and and funding zoning commissioners through. And and uh staff recommended approval after a great deal of of exchange and information um vetting. So the issue of of lots on the lake would be, I'm not sure I understand.
So just just to clarify. This is based on the neighborhood general design district with seventy-foot lots. So having the eighty-foot lots is actually exceeds what the 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 code calls for.
Mm hmm.
As I understand it, so the eighty-foot lots um are reasonable, and also uh they're the same uh. You know, we we approved eighty and eighty-five lots over at on Lake Apopka with MI Homes. So there is some consistency here with the size of the lots. You can put docks on eighty-foot lots um, and these lots are also on sewer, so as far as the size of the lots, they don't have to be as big as the ones that are in John's Landing. Um but be that as it may, the the eighty-foot lots on the lake are consistent with the code.
Okay, I just don't feel like this is buttoned up enough for for us to make an informed decision without too many variables that have been addressed at the staff or the P and C level. Um I don't know. I mean, uh we're in an open meeting, I could say a lot of things that I'm just not going to.
Right.
Go down that road. I don't think this is buttoned up enough for us to vote on this tonight. I think there are some open issues that need to be addressed, so when it comes to us, and it I I don't know if it needs to go back to P and Z, because I don't think P and Z should have pushed it to us in this condition. I just don't.
And here's the thing with it, they might have thought that it was buttoned up enough, and 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 you might have thought, but as it comes to us, it's clearly not.
And may I ask uh what the path from here to buttoned up be?
That is a path for Steve to figure out with Brad. Um I think that um maybe tonight with this discussion of we need input. Input doesn't, input is, this is not the proper place for input. Um once it's buttoned up and we know what we are, what's being recommended, then we take input. But it becomes less, not not as much as we have sitting on the table right now, but Steve, do you not agree?
Uh I I completely understand, I I know where it is.
You understand.
I understand where you want to be.
And just further, I mean, we follow the process and 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 that led us here.
And again, there's enough. We're not questioning what you're following, what you didn't follow, we're just saying it's not enough for us at this point.
Yeah, it's just, this isn't what I, you know, this isn't what we normally get.
Right.
At this point, we get something that, though, you know, I think there's issues that didn't come up come up at where whatever time that they should have come up, so I'm happy to take limited succinct input from residents tonight, so that you guys can go back and come up with something to bring back to us. How's that sound?
That's fine, I mean, that's really the.
I'm not saying that nobody, that people did something wrong, I'm just saying, for whatever reason.
Sack of.
Uh some ear that isn't.
Incomplete.
It that's not. Yeah.
Okay.
Want to coincide with all the town departments. We were under the impression that we were.
I know, I'm I'm not faulting you.
Yeah, so.
At all.
Basically, I, we're we're all ears.
Okay, so.
Can I ask him one more question before?
No, you know, you didn't laugh, sorry.
Lakefront lots, is there a swell and burn system behind it? It looks like it is, but like, do you have a swell and burn behind your house?
Yes.
But do you have a swell and burn?
Yes, we have, we have a swell along the south side of character in the runoff in the laws before it enters the lake.
Okay.
But the swell is different, because our development was done so much earlier, that's required now, so.
That's an Orange County requirement, correct?
Uh that'd probably be the water management.
Management, it's not us, is what I'm trying to. Okay, all right, so what I want now is, I don't want anything, yeah, you can sit down, that's great, thank you. Um.
Well, look how fancy he's going back to that chair.
This is what happens when meetings go past nine o'clock, sorry. Um we are not productive, we are not, we are not at a point where we can make good decisions, and I'm not gonna make bad decisions on something that is this important. Um so what I am asking for from the residents is, I'm hearing you about you want some kind of privacy barrier, and it's I I think it's up to um Ed and Steve or and Brad to come up with what those options are. So we know that, correct?
Yes.
Um not today.
Not today, no, this is for going forward, I'm trying to, I'm trying to cut down comments here. Um the second one is, there's a concern about the lakefront widths. Um swell and burn, um that is, or that's water management probably, but we'll look at what it is.
That'll be part of the construction plan.
I had a question about, you were talking to wildlife management about some kind of weird animal that I don't know anything about.
Blue jay.
Yeah, uh well, I know blue jays, and um over tortoises, what about eagles? So you're talking to them about eagles?
Well, uh.
Say yes.
Yes.
You are back.
It's bad.
Issue is uh we're we're gonna have a swim thing, but it's only ninety-day.
I know, you said it had a shelf life, I heard that.
We'll do that a little later on and inform it. So to make sure that there's, that it's still.
What about eagles?
Eagles, we will look into, obviously.
That's great, thank you. All right.
Looking to go back to that chair again.
Now, audience, residents, what else are you concerned about at this point?
I'm gonna.
Precisely.
I'm gonna let our word president go first.
Okay, and please come up and tell us who you are, because we need it for the record.
Chief Board President.
Good evening, Adam May and Calvin. Um I just wanted to voice your name, please, so Charmaine Porter, and I am the President of the John's Landing Women's Association. Um we just wanted to voice our concerns, we're trying to put into a letter, the women's letter to both the town and to the developer. Um the buffer wall is, and I know you are going to, but it is a big concern about. The main concern is it's part of the main entry into our community. Um those homes in Bay, like uh Bayview, they their backs are going to be onto our main entrance. Our own properties that back onto that entrance have a wall, a proper more wall.
Okay.
It's a brick wall, we don't have a fencing. Um I don't think our residents or our community is gonna be happy with um any sorts of landscaping there. We have, obviously, who's gonna maintain it, number one, and we do need something that's a better buffer than just landscaping when you come into our community. The other big concern is, I'm not sure if you're aware, but John's Landing has two sections to it. It has a section that was developed by developer, and longer vista homes on both sides are our state section, which are much larger. They are all custom homes. The three that are on abouting the new development are all custom homes. So we obviously have a concern, we have any depreciation in housing prices, because we've got this community, this community with their backyard butting much our community, that is going to cause an issue for prices in our community, and also affects our community as a whole. So those are some of the issues we have there, we have a couple of others that we wanted to raise to the town. Um the dimension of taking water all from longer vista. We're not engineers, the question was, does that affect our water pressure? What is the situation with that? Uh we don't expect an answer, and that's something that we are concerned about. Um I think, oh, then the traffic down Remington Road, I know that you said it's going to be very little impact on to it. I'm not sure if you are aware, if you come down Remington Road at any of the peak times, it is an issue since the racetrack has been built. So we have an issue with traffic, both ways, the traffic will back up almost to the dirt pile, with people trying to turn into Remington Road. We have another issue with our, we have gates of community, traffic coming into our community, going up Remington Road. Um at the moment, you have a right turn into John's Cove. Everybody trying to go straight ends up backed up because our community is trying to turn in, there is no space there. Um going up to the traffic line from our community, problem they do. So.
Okay. Well, it sounds like, you know, we'll, we will address it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other issue? Come on up and tell us who you are.
My name is Grammy Brown, I live in John's. And I have a question for the development team. Are there gonna be any back porchers on the second floor of any of the homes?
Um that.
Oh, yeah.
That really is uh to be determined, I don't know if there's many. Two-story models and what are they doing? Um but that's something that we can really use for a more in detail. But is there back porchers I know?
You're gonna have twelve homes back and have dogs. In January, I thought east, yes, uh there is twelve.
That's the one. And this was fun. And you started.
Okay.
Point is, I guess, that you don't want second-story porches overlooking people's houses.
It could then five of us.
We'll make note of that and take a look at it.
Fence or anything to.
Gotcha.
Take concern.
I understand.
And that will come in with different things we look at.
Look at that, we'll know this.
To make sure that that doesn't.
Okay. Well, we'll, we will address it, that doesn't mean, you know, that means that we'll talk about it again.
Um I'm Kelly Delatri, and I own lot one ninety-one, which is the main lot that's going to be affected on the water. Um the only other things I know they've said, traffic, water pressure, there was also an issue, um and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but another developer tried to put ten houses on there, and there was a concern about fire vehicles getting in and out, so I would like to know how that sums up with twenty houses.
Well, this isn't gonna have a gate, which makes a big difference.
Okay, well, and I'd also like you to look at the ratio of size of twenty houses on that one little piece versus John's Landing.
Understand.
It's very different. Um the other thing is, I also thought a long time ago, when we still lived there, there was a single buyer that was gonna put one big house and.
I never remember that.
Fire, they were requiring a park, in addition to the retention pond, they were requiring a park. That doesn't look like that is anywhere in these particular.
Those are different um agreements based.
I get it, I'm just.
They are.
Race.
Okay, gotcha.
What the titty have to consider previously, which I think is important.
Uh I don't remember that at all.
The other thing that that possibly makes a lot of people happy is you have the retention pond here with all the houses abutting, why don't you flip it? Put the houses over there and the retention. My, it's just a suggestion, and I'm saying maybe you consider that, because that would alleviate all the five houses here, well, three of the houses, and probably maybe one of the of the top, do you understand what I'm saying?
Okay, okay, noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? All right, now that was orderly. Thank you, I appreciate everybody's patience, and I promise that the next time we get together, we'll put it further up on the agenda. So I have a little more patience than I do right now, I'm sorry, but I just really feel that after an hour and a half, you're not making good decisions. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm at eight oh nine.
Remember, after an hour and a half.
I know. For I'm one of the houses, a two-story greenhouse, when you come into the subdivision, if you look to the left, I'm right there. I'm glad this gentleman mentioned about second-story balconies, looking back in.
Yep.
The format they had also was showing garages basically opening it up as we all come into our subdivision. So we were actually talking about seeing if they would be willing, and again, just as we're trying to spitfire here, because I don't know how this process.
We're spitballing.
Because all of a sudden.
You're right.
Hey, this thing's approved, and they're gonna put shrubbed, developers wanna get.
Uh we're not even close to that.
Okay, but that's where something with a wall, where they would backfill with our wrought iron. And that would then keep the continuity of the four homes running along the backside of the entrance, it would give that nice view. But um I don't know when that, how fast that.
Well, we'll know.
I saw an idea for everyone to look at, so.
Thank you. All right. This was a whole lot of fun. Um but I do, yes, sir.
Uh just a question, uh and and good feedback.
Are you gonna talk about eagles?
Just say yes. Come on, come on, come on.
Nation, so it is getting to that time. Um but.
That's mine.
But my question is that that a lot of the points that they raised seems to be something that will be ahead of us in terms of design standards.
Well, and but at least you can, when you do your presentation, you can say.
Yeah.
We're gonna talk about that then.
And I would say that organically, I don't know that actually woods is gonna necessarily wanna be selling homes with balconies overlooking other homes necessarily. So there's an organic correction as well, if it happened, but again, we're prepared to to step it through.
Good, and I I'm glad that you guys have an open mind about taking feedback, I really am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just have one question, how how can we find, because I didn't know about the last meeting.
So it's, we publish the agendas Thursday before the meetings on every second and fourth Tuesday of the month, except we have budget meetings this month, which is the only time in the whole year that we change our meetings.
That's true.
But.
If you Google Oakland, Florida Town Commission Agenda.
I promise, like, I can, I will have our whole community here, because I think there's more people that was like.
Yeah, it's it's published on the town, it's published on the town website Thursday prior to the meeting.
Or you can. For news boxes and whenever.
And Facebook.
Both P and D and.
We're hoping after all the community does come with you.
Yeah, we.
Answers, right?
Believe it or not.
Or you'll have a lot of these answers already, like.
Yeah.
The wall, I mean.
Yeah.
We should talk about that here.
Keep this up late, so what the heck?
All right. Are we done? All finished, all right, hey, hey, hey. Didn't get the best part. I'd like a vote on it, though.
We gotta vote on it, right?
Oh, to table it, yes, we can, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to table the Bayview at John's Lake preliminary site site plan.
Till a date to be determined.
To a till a to a date to be determined.
I'll second it.
All right, move to second it, all in favor?
All right.
Now you can.
Now you can go.
All right, guys, I love you, but get out.
Still have a meeting. We can't, we can't leave yet.
All right, make them stay until the meeting.
All right, now.
Yeah.
Lock the door.
Excuse us, please, we do have to finish the meeting.
Either sit down or vacate the premises.
Thank you.
Oh, not you, Stephanie.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We haven't.
You asked the yes yet. We asked you, I'm good.
We asked you, I'm good. Uh not, do I have anything? Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay, what about you?
Do I have anything for the intimate meeting?
Per, do you have anything to talk about as a commissioner?
Oh, um. Try kindly is gonna start, still gonna start a survey, probably the beginning of September. Um just asking different questions, trying to get more people involved, so we can get a survey to email, and I know Lisa get it. And she'll make sure that we get it and fill it out, but some of the things are about having meetings at nighttime to try to. You know, get more people to come out, so, so sorry we were coming.
Mikey?
I wouldn't dream of.
I don't have anything in, in that spirit, I have nothing either.
Still got that, man.
Uh just like sending out information on the front bike this morning.
I saw that.
So just a point of clarification, another kind of down the pedestrian bridge, they, they said on all the eleven. I do not know when the road bridge is going to open. They will have pedestrians on the road bridge, but I don't know when the cars will be allowed.
Are we, do we still think maybe just September, because that's the answer I'm giving?
There's a little bit of finished work there, but they are moving ahead with. You know, moving the.
Okay.
Just keep that in mind.
See, I do have a few there.
Take your life in your hands.
All right, I'm all, all right.
Go ahead, please.
That's a junior nine thirty-three.
Wow, that's the first time in your, like, twelve years?
Yeah.
That you didn't part in mind it.